Yeah, it didn't work.
All right, I have seven o'clock and like to call to organize the special session of the town council clear lake Monday, December fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'd like to do this in the line of the United States of America. And as to the recalling or which stands one nation under our indivisible with dignity.
Just give us some doom instruction, please.
For those of you at home, please stay muted if you have any questions or comments during the open public part of the meeting. Just click the raise your hand button and then we will call you in order.
Thank you. Item four unfinished business we have none, so we'll move on to item five. New business, public hearing.
On November fifteenth, town council accepted the water sanitation proposal and authorized formal notification of award to water incorporated. The accepted proposal price represents an increase to our residents and requires a change chapter fifty-two solid waste and recycling collection. Removal and disposal section fifty-two dot O A P rates and charges. Notice of public hearing was executed on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. And I would like to move to introduce ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fifteen ordinance amending sections of chapter fifty-two. Now Clear Lake, Indiana code of ordinances.
All right, I. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
That's Molly. I'll second that.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Hold same sign, motion period.
So reading the ordinance town of Clear Lake, Indiana ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash fifteen. Ordinance amending sections of chapter fifty-two town of Clear Lake, Indiana code of ordinances. Whereas the collection removal and disposal services of solid waste and recyclables for residential properties within the town of Clear Lake. It's part of a comprehensive system of removing and disposing of sewage within the town. In furtherance of the health and safety of the residents of the town. And whereas the town council, the town of Clear Lake, Indiana deems it necessary to amend various sections of chapter fifty-two solid waste. And recycling collection, removal and disposal of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana code ordinances. Now therefore be it ordained by the town council of town of Clear Lake, Indiana that section three, section fifty-two dot zero eight. The rates and charges shall be amended to read as follows. One, it is hereby determined that a just and reasonable charge for such service for the year twenty twenty-three is two hundred and eighty-seven dollars and twenty-eight cents per year. Perentetical twenty-three dollars and ninety-four cents per month for each residence property. It shall be due payable in advance whether annually, quarterly or monthly. The town clerk treasurer shall collect such charges from each occupant or owner of each residence. Or the occupant as may be provided in sub paragraph F. Two, it is hereby determined that a just and reasonable charge for such service for the year twenty twenty-four. Is two hundred and ninety-seven dollars forty-eight cents per year. Parenthetical twenty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents per month for each residence property which shall be due. And payable in advance whether annually, quarterly or monthly. The town clerk treasurer shall collect such charges from each occupant or owner of each residence. Or the occupant as may be provided in sub paragraph F. Three, it is hereby determined that a just and reasonable charge for such service for the year twenty twenty-five. Is three hundred and ten dollars and sixty-eight cents per year. Parenthetical twenty-five dollars eighty-nine cents per month. For each residence property which shall be due and payable in advance whether annually, quarterly or monthly. The town clerk treasurer shall collect such charges from each occupant or owner of each residence. Or the occupant as may be provided in sub paragraph F. Four, in order to provide coverage for cost of increases in rates and charges, this ordinance shall include a fix A. Contract collection adjustment factor to be updated with any changes in the contract collection rates. Rates charged to the town residents shall be equal to the rate established in section three. Parenthetical one plus any calculated adjustment on appendix A. Section four, this ordinance shall amend or repeal and replace any previously adopted ordinances in conflict herewith. Section five, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption. By the town council of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana. Adopt ordinance adopted by the town council of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana this day of point twenty twenty-two. Any questions by council?
I have one.
So I would move to open for public time and question.
And second that. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hold same sign. Open for public time. A point of order. If somebody twist that a little bit, we can see it.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you.
John, you could have come up and done that.
I was afraid I'd get my hands slapped.
Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Other questions?
Okay. I would move here and then I would move to close public comment for next second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
This completes the first reading ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash fifteen ordinance amending sections of chapter fifty-two. Now clearly Indiana code of ordinance. And move to suspend the rules of order allowing for a second reading by title only.
A second that's different. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Motion carries.
Reading by title only ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash fifteen ordinance amending sections of chapter fifty-two town of Clear Lake, Indiana code of ordinances. This completes the second public reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash fifteen. I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash fifteen ordinance amending sections of chapter fifty-two town of Clear Lake, Indiana code of ordinance as written.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
George, I'll second that.
A motion and a second. A further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Dan. All right, next item on the new business. Sentation contract.
Yep. So. Continue with this one real quick. So in October again, council approved expenditure. I'm sorry, on November fifteen, town council accepted the washboard sanitation proposal and authorization. An authorized formal notification award to water incorporated. The contract has been generated and provided to council for review. That stipulates the execution of the work and connects the the governing documents. This this particular contract has already been pre-reviewed by our council and also water incorporated. Are there any questions by council on the contract?
Did we get any kickback or anything from legal when they got a chance to dig look at?
No, they said good job. I mean, the basis of it is the existing contract. I did add one section called precedence of of documents, so it outlines the precedence. Should there be a conflict between documents? Any other questions?
No, I have none.
Okay, hearing none, I move to use the contract as written. And formally enter into contract with water incorporated to provide the transportation and disposal of municipal solid waste and recycling within corporate limits of Clear Lake, Indiana.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
George, I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries. All right, item C, first version or additional appropriation of the ARP.
All right. In October, council approved expenditures for from the ARP grant fund with intention to appropriate thirty-six thousand for the GIS project. A resolution authorizing an additional appropriation within the ARP grant fund. Allowing for payment of expenditures which will roll over into next year has been prepared for council consideration. I move to introduce resolution zero six at twenty twenty-two additional appropriation resolution.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Molly, I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
So reading the resolution ARP grant fund, American Rescue Plan, additional appropriation resolution zero six dash twenty twenty-two. Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money. And was originally appropriated in the twenty twenty-two annual budget now therefore. Section one be resolved by the town council of the town of Clear Lake, St. Ben County. That for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named ARP grant fund. American Rescue Plan and for the purposes specified to appropriate subject to the laws governing the same. Fund name ARP grant fund, American Rescue Plan, fund number twenty-four oh one. Fiscal body. Major budget classification, other services and charges amount requested thirty-six thousand amount approved thirty-six thousand. Global fund twenty-four oh one ARP grant fund, American Rescue Plan grant thirty-six thousand. Amount requested and amount approved thirty-six thousand. Adopted this fifteenth day of November twenty twenty-two.
There was table that collects me.
Yeah. Well. With correction, December fifth. Of twenty twenty-two. So I would open it up for council discussion. Having read the ordinance.
Yes, to confirm your question. The the purpose of this fund reallocation out of the ARP is for the GIS.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I would move to open for public time and question. I will second that.
I have a motion and then a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. Open for public comment. General hell two of six, could you give us a two minute resume of really what this GIS is doing? We heard in the discussions several months ago, but I forgot.
So so basically we contracted with outside contractor by the name of landmark GIS. And what they've done so far is gone around and. Basically, coordinate positioning every grinder on around Clear Lake on that map. So we pretty much know exactly where that including pictures of the grinders. So I can pull one up right now and show you anybody's property, where it's located and what it looks like. So the guy doesn't have to, you know, try to find it in somebody's landscape. But all the night he actually has a picture of it. And addition to that, they picked up any of the. Brainage that we have on the lake so far that they could find a manhole covers. Trying to think what else is on the map, but. In essence, we're going to have our whole lake digitized, including like this map over here when you're looking at. You know, destinations of, you know, like LA or. You know, any of that stuff, we can actually use this J G I S map to make electronic maps. So it pulled in the beacon, which is, you know, the county's system right into our system, so. In a nutshell, we digitize the lake.
And it is an added benefit when we do projects in the future. We used to have to pay for surveys and things along those lines. But since the group has gone this route, it'll allow us to not have to pay for the additional surveys time and time again. If we're working within the same area that a past project has had.
We'll still have a little bit of cost, but it won't. It should be as low as.
This is called an additional appropriation. What was the initial appropriation of what has changed?
There was no original one, but in order to actually spend the money out of that fund. We have to do an additional appropriation.
Does that mean the same money?
What's that?
I I heard every word of you, but is is the money still the same, the thirty-six, the thirty-six?
Yeah, that's what they approved to spend.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? How far along are we with the location of?
Nation has all the web station.
Yes.
And I haven't gone through everything to see what else he put in there, but he had a bunch of other stuff that's playful.
And that's on on our system?
That's yes, that is on a website that basically we have access to.
Okay, and then we brought a beacon and laid that over.
That was over the whole process was they brought beacon and later over top.
Well, all council members have access to that.
I don't think so at this point.
Any particular reason why not?
It's an open system and if you have access to it, you can actually make this, so. If we can get a read only type thing, we'll probably end up doing that. But right now, right now, right now, the system is or that site is live, so if you went in there and didn't know what they were doing, you could actually know what we think.
I hope down the road that we we get that as beacon has it. You know, to look only.
Yep.
Can be helpful contractors or anybody doing any work around.
I'm sure we can do that. I mean, it'd just be authorization.
Well, it would also have be something that Robert would have access to, and if he's meeting with a contractor, I'm sure he could. Probably pull up and print them the site.
I mean, in the short term, we could do the same thing, council member.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, that's part of the business.
Yeah.
We're just, we're just building the database right now.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I would like to close. I would like to make a motion to close public comment. I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
Who does have access to it now? I'm assuming Guy, Denver, Robert.
I'm not sure Denver has access. I know it's a two of us and guy right now and GIS landmark is putting the information in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules of order allowing for a second reading by title only.
I have a motion and a second.
George.
Go ahead. George, I'll say. A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
Reading by title, ARP grant fund, American Rescue Plan, additional appropriation resolution. Resolution zero six at twenty twenty-two. This completes the second public reading of resolution zero six at twenty-two. I move to pass resolution zero six twenty twenty-two additional appropriation resolution with the correction. Inclusive of a correction to the adopted date to be December fifth. I'm sorry, the fifth day of December twenty twenty-two.
I will second that with the correction I want.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Have none.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
Right. I mean, the opioid or next restricted and unrestricted.
Yep, the town of Clear Lake has been notified of its pending receipt of funds resulting from the national settlement relating to opioid prescription and addiction. A separate fund is necessary to properly account for receipts and dispersment of monies from the settlement. I move to introduce ordinance twenty two thousand twenty-two dash thirteen and ordinance establishing the opioid fund restricted.
It's twenty.
There's true, there's twenty two, thirteen and twenty-two. Dash fourteen and we're doing restricted first and then unrestricted to go in. In there.
Same, sorry.
All right.
Thank you for catching me.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
George, I'll say.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
Ordinance number two zero two two dash one three and ordinance establishing the opioid fund. Restricted, whereas the town of Clear Lake has been notified of its pending receipt of certain funds as a participating political subdivision. From a national settlement with Cardinal Health McKesson, AmerisourceBergen and Johnson and Johnson relating to opioid prescription and addiction. And whereas a separate fund is necessary to properly account for receipts and dispersments of monies received from the settlement. Now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana as follows. Section one, there is hereby established a special fund known as opioid settlement fund restricted. Section two, the contributions to the fund shall be the restricted portion of the opioid settlement funds received from the state of Indiana. By the town as participating political subdivision from a national settlement with Cardinal Health McKesson, AmerisourceBergen and Johnson and Johnson. Second, three, that expenditures may be made from the fund by appropriation by the town council for any purpose approved by the town council. From the list attached hereto as exhibit A, list of opioid mediation uses. Section four, that this fund shall be a perpetual fund until terminated by future ordinance. And that any funds remaining at the time of termination shall be returned to the general fund of the town. Ordinance adopted this blank day of twenty twenty-two town of Clear Lake. Darren Thorpe, member, Dan Ripley, member, George Shinkle, member, Brent Slosser, member, and Molly Weber. Remember, I testified Jessica Swander, clerk pressure. Like to open it for discussion.
Good one.
And we'll move for public comment and questions.
I will second.
I already have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign. All right, open for public comment. I think you might want to change for to fro.
On the. Okay, where else? Whereas. No.
Receive from.
Yeah, we see from the second where the second whereas. Do you see it, Jessica, the second line?
Yes.
Third word from the end. Okay.
Could you give us an overview of what this encompasses?
I can. I can give it a specific dollar. It's not very much. This is happening for the federal. Federally funding is going to every government municipality because of the opioid problem that we have nationwide. In the hope that the money stays in the community to help and we'll go through some of the other things that they. Want to it to be used for. For us at the town of Clear Lake, what is it, Jessica? It's. A very small.
Yeah. But it's over.
And it's twelve years. Yeah, it's just is ongoing and currently the marshals all have Narcan in the vehicle. And so we already have some of the things, but we don't get enough money to set up anything elaborate. But we could replace the Narcan when it expires and things of that nature.
Thank you. It was the shovel. Few years, we were getting it for free. But that's about. I'm a year ago, so when these, I think I've got another, I think about a year left on what we have currently. So we will have to actually start buying our own Narcan to carry with us. But it is even cheaper. It's very expensive. Now, but it might be used for. Different training programs that they offer for law enforcement.
Yeah, it's for for responding to law enforcement.
Yeah, more than run on board. Uh, okay, yeah.
About we have two, two.
Any other questions from the public? Okay, so I'll move to close the public comment.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
So this completes the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirteen and ordinance establishing the opioid fund restricted. I move to suspend the rules of order allowing for a second reading by title only.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, right.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carries.
All right, ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirteen and ordinance establishing the opioid fund. Restricted. I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirteen and ordinance establishing the opioid fund as written.
This is what else? One correction.
Oh, right, with the correction that I stated earlier.
Retracted, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll retract motion.
I will make a motion to.
I will make a motion to pass the restriction or restricted ordinance with corrections.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
George, I'll say that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
And then I'll read exhibit E. I'll just read by title only, just so, um, the audience has an idea of what this includes. Exhibit E is a list of opioid remediation uses, schedule A, core strategies. The naloxone and other FDA approved drugs to reverse opioid overdoses. Medication assisted treatment, M A T, distribution and other opioid related treatment. Pregnant and postpartum women, expanding treatment for neonatal accident syndrome, N A S. Expansion of warm handoff programs and recovery services. Treatment for incarcerated population, prevention programs, expanding syringe service programs. Evidence based data collection and research analyzing the effectiveness of the abatement strategies within the state. Schedule B approved uses, part one is treatment, treatment opioid use disorder or to treat opioid use disorder. Support people in treatment and recovery. Connect people who need help to the help they need, connections to care. Address the needs of criminal justice involved persons. Address the needs of pregnant or parenting women and their families, including babies with neonatal accident syndrome. Part two, prevention. Prevent over prescribing and ensure appropriate prescribing and dispensing of opioids. Prevent misuse of opioids. Prevent overdose deaths and other harms, harm reduction. Part three, other strategies, first responders, leadership, planning and coordination, training, research. And that's all. Does that give you a little perspective, John?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, um, now I need to introduce ordinance twenty twenty two dash fourteen and ordinance establishing the opioid fund unrestricted.
All right, I have a motion, I have a second. George, I'll second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion carries.
Any questions, anybody? Oh. So I'm gonna go ahead and read ordinance twenty twenty two dash fourteen and ordinance establishing the opioid fund unrestricted. Ordinance number twenty twenty two dash fourteen and ordinance establishing opioid fund unrestricted. Whereas the town of Clear Lake has been notified of its pending receipt of certain funds. As a participating political subdivision from a national settlement with Cardinal Health McKesson, AmerisourceBergen and Johnson and Johnson. Relating to opioid prescription and addiction and. Whereas a separate fund is necessary to properly account for receipts and dispersments of monies received. Again. We need to change for to from the settlement. Now therefore be it ordained by the town council of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana as follows. Section one, there is hereby. Established a fund known as opioid settlement fund unrestricted. Section two, that contributions to the fund shall be. The unrestricted portion of the opioid settlement funds received from the state of Indiana by the town as a. Participating political subdivision from a national settlement with Cardinal Health McKesson, AmerisourceBergen and Johnson and Johnson. Section three, that expenditures may be made from the fund by appropriation. By the town council for any purpose approved by the town council. Section four, that this fund shall be perpetual fund until terminated. By future ordinance and any funds remaining at the time of termination shall be returned to the general fund of the town. Ordinance adopted this blank day of blank twenty twenty two. Town of Clear Lake, Indiana, Darren Thorpe, member, Dan Rippey, member, George Schinkel, member, Brent Slasher, member, Molly Weber, member. I tested Jessica Swander, clerk pressure. So I will open it for council discussion.
No questions?
Hearing none, I move for, uh, to open for public comment and questions.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Anybody have? Okay.
And then I'll make a motion to close to the public.
I have a motion and a second. George, I'll say. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
This completes the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty two dash fourteen and ordinance establishing the opioid fund unrestricted. I would move to suspend the rules of order allowing for a second reading by title only.
A motion for every second.
George, I'll say.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
Ordinance number twenty twenty two dash fourteen and ordinance establishing opioid fund unrestricted. I move to pass ordinance. Twenty twenty two dash fourteen and ordinance establishing opioid fund unrestricted as written with the correction. Of form to from under the second whereas.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
George, I'll second that.
What correction?
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carried. Thank you, Molly. All right, uh, we are down to item E, Steben County Economic Development, Brett.
Yes, this is the time of year where we. Sign our agreements if we decide to continue on with the Steben County Economic Development Corporation. Uh, this year, the, the fee of two thousand dollars was not raised. It's the same as it was last year. For those who were in attendance when Isaac, the director came and made a presentation. Uh, there's a very clear correlation to the Steben County Economic Council's actions and efforts. As to the funds the town of Clear Lake receives from a couple different, from multiple ones. So it's, in my opinion, that is in our best interest to continue. To work with the Steben County Economic Council and support the community. Council, you guys got?
Uh, just a quick question, uh, what funds do we generate? Uh, I.
Well, you, they, they promote business and obviously business brings in revenue to the town, um, so we get, um. Oh, I mean, tax dollars from all, all, to all sorts of funds, M V H or economic development or. Not necessarily your general fund, I don't think.
Something general.
So. Let me see if I can get his, his presentation he gave us. Real quick, there's two, there's two specific funds. That the revenue generated from the local businesses and the communities basically comes to us. If they're doing good, if the community is doing good, if the businesses are doing good.
Community being the town of Clear Lake.
The county.
That counts.
Should we participate in all county business revenue? We receive a portion of it. We receive a portion of it. Yes, that's correct. And I can get you his presentation, George.
Yeah, I believe I have it.
Do you have it? Okay.
You see, that was August sixteen plus.
I believe it was. Yeah, because we had to push it back from July.
It might have been September, but I was not at the meeting.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions? If not, I would make a motion to open it to public comment.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time. Motion carries. Okay.
At eleven, eleven twenty. So it sounds like there's a two thousand dollar commitment to.
Correct.
And it sounds like that what we get back for that two thousand dollar participation is far more accessible.
Will be correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Number two oh six, I believe I was at that meeting and I think the. The speaker spoke well and clearly and I endorse the council decision. Hopefully that you will continue. Anyone else?
I make a motion to close public comment and.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries.
That I make a motion to move forward with the Steben County Economic Development Council agreement.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
It's Molly, I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion carries.
Right, if that's a presentation, we can maybe put on the website, maybe under some of our partners. Let's work with, um, Jennifer.
Yeah. Cause it was very, there was, there was a lot of good information he was. He was communicating, I think that'd be beneficial as well.
All right, so moving on, item F. Golf cart penalties and registration fee discussion.
As a result of the golf cart concerns from over the summer, Molly, Chris, Jessica and myself. Meant, uh, met and discussed the current golf cart ordinance and some possible changes. To the penalty and the registration fees. Uh, the amounts were discussed. We discussed the fact that should we move forward with anything, this is just a discarded one. Um, should we move forward, we would need to run it through legal to create an advertisement for the town. Um, anything or it would need to be published in the paper. To bring forward to council, any ordinance basically with a fee needs to be published in the paper. Council would also need to vote to approve the publishing and move forward on any of the fee charters. Get that verbiage right, Jessica. All right. So with that being said, um, we originally had planned to discuss this in the October meeting. However, due to time constraints, it has been pushed forward a couple of times and gather up there. So. We're lucky to have a member. On council who was one of the originals.
Mm-hmm.
And writing this, so hopefully we can get some insight if needed.
Probably not from oh nine.
Exactly.
Nice try, but, uh, another bank isn't there. Um, I can go pull the files if you want, give me an hour.
No, no, we're not.
Well, this is pretty clear right, right here. And I think the, the, the meat of what we're looking at. Are, uh, really the, the registration fees and the, the penalties. What's? What can we do that's going to, um, enforce the laws? That's gonna get our folks' attention and. And Chris might have a little input in that, you know, it's, uh, stop and then warning doesn't necessarily do it all the time, so. Well, it will meet it. And in addition to, to giving it a little bit more meat to the bones, we also are incurring more costs. For the officers to patrol, registration fees for the town employees to go through that process. So the cost. For the town to have the golf carts is also, has also increased over that timeframe too. And, and with that, there's a major safety issue that, that I don't know if you guys have read it from residents, but a lot of folks tell me those. Who live around the corners and that, these things just they're coming around way too fast. We're gonna be picking some folks up off the pavement here. If it continues.
And it's a privilege that we want to keep for the residents. We don't want to see this go away. So I think that's the other part of the discussion.
So I'll keep, keep the discussion going. The first, the first item on here that we're gonna see is the registration fees. So I'm proposing three, three separate ideas to talk about as a group. First one would be, well, I'll read the original first. Registration, which shall be valid for. Two calendar years from the date of the issuance of the registered certification or a fee of forty dollars. First burden would be increasing that fee, maintaining the verbiage that's in there. So it'd be registration. Which shall be valid for two calendar years from the date of the issue. Issuance of the registration cer- certificate. Or a fee of eighty dollars. That was option one. Option two, registration shall be valid for one year, one calendar year from the date of the issue assurance of that.
Issue.
Issuance, thank you, Jessica, of the registration certificate or a fee of fifty dollars. That was option two. Third would be registration, which shall be valid for two calendar years from the date of the. Assurance of the registration certificate for a fee of ninety dollars. And shall be valid for one calendar year from the date of the issuance of the registration certificate. Or a fee of fifty dollars. So that third option, we gave the community. The opportunity to either purchase it as a one or a two year certificate for the registration. Option two was just for one calendar year option. The first option maintained. The two years and increased the amount. So with that said, I think it would be a good point to pause and just get council's opinions on. Where they would like to see. This portion of the ordinance change or make it.
Yeah, if I can just, um, ask Chris and not to put anybody on the spot that I don't remember is. The number of golf carts that we have now versus where we were, say, three years ago, generally speaking, I mean.
Again.
I can't tell you where we were three years ago. I can tell you right now, we have about two hundred and fifty golf carts.
Thank you. But that has increased.
And over the last, especially with COVID, it increased a lot over the last, the period of COVID.
Thank you.
We, every time I came into work, there was golf carts can be registered. For new ones.
Perfect, thank you so much.
When we issue a permit, is there an inspection?
Yes, off car inspection. They get inspected, um, and they're given the, uh. Before they're given that how to perform, which I would see, uh, not all, but the majority ruled. We generally tell them that the entire list is on the town website.
Mm-hmm. And when you do a, a, uh, second year inspection, uh, at the end of two years. How often do you find that there's a violation that you actually don't know?
We don't actually do a secondary inspection on them. Usually we'll catch any violations of equipment violations and catch those as they're driving.
On the road, okay.
But that will follow, when they renew it at the two year mark, uh, the only thing they do is either they can stop here at the town hall and they can get a renewed year. Or if they can, we will stop out and renew it there.
Okay, so we renew if you don't necessarily do it.
Or pay them off, cause you have.
Thanks.
And then they think Jennifer's been mailing in the new registering.
So we're really, your time is, is in initial registration.
My time's the initial registration. Jennifer, Jessica's times and then renewals of those. So the way the process works is on a renewal. Um, at that, we do it right now, so every two years, um, at the beginning of the year or summertime, maybe around. April, they, I've got with Jennifer and we will, she will mail out. Reminders to everybody within that calendar year whose registration is going to need to be renewed. Either has expired or is expiring. But she knows without generally about two months later, I'll get the list of. Registrations that have not been renewed yet. And then she'll do a second mailing of those usually somewhere about halfway through summer. And then she'll do another mailing towards the end of summer of anybody who still has not got their registration renewed. That generally seems to work fairly well. I know typically we'll have maybe five or ten people that don't renew their registration by the end of the summer. Um, and some of those are because they moved out of the community and are no longer have the golf cart sold or things like that.
Well, my, just for my point, I, I'm thinking of the option three. Because as Chris just stated, some people move out of the community and so this way there is an option whether they want to do a two year or a one year.
Hasn't been a lot of, um, a lot of requests for one year.
I can't say I never got a request for a one year.
So do you, have you had conversations about a one year that?
No, um, I. Like the ninety dollars.
I will say.
I just, I, I personally think this is a privilege. People are abusing it. And if this continues, we as a council are gonna have to revisit. Putting a limit on the number of golf carts or things of that nature. And I don't think we want to go there. So. I, I have heard, um, from individuals that saw this on the agenda. That our penalty should align with a car accident and the penalty there. And what, you know, increase. And what, you know, increasing it because you have to have your driver's license, so I don't think. Ninety dollars over two years is. A privilege.
I will say right now, it is. It's kind of like half and half, like this year, we do the ones that expire in two years. Next year, and if we do a one-year, it's gonna kind of combine them all, and then it's gonna make our job even. This year.
Well, it's just an option, I mean, people could still do two-year, but there would be a one-year option with alternate three, that would be. And I'd be curious, Brent, what you and Chris think.
I don't know, I kinda like option number. One, doing the two-year thing, because it does kinda break it up. The two hundred and fifty golf carts we have, we kinda have a pretty good balance right now. I'm on a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-five, so it kinda, we know that we have this number. Borrowing any new registrations, we have about a hundred and twenty-five people that are going to register golf carts. In twenty twenty-three, we'll have about a hundred and twenty-five in twenty twenty-four.
Helps out with the budgeting.
Give me an idea also, when I need to order new reg, the actual brand new registration for new golf carts and stickers and stuff like that. It's easier, I think it's easier for me to manage it, doing it that way. Um, I've had it, but again, I've never, we've never had it where it's been a two-year or a one-year option, so I. I mean, it may still be manageable, it may be a nightmare, I don't know.
Jessica, you know how much cost we have in a registration from the placard that we issue to the time that takes you or Jen to. To do it. Estimate a, a cost per registration.
The stickers right now, the last time I worked, I can get them, I get them in packs of fifty, and the last time I think I ordered them.
I think that costs one of them.
Two hundred dollars, two hundred something dollars for just fifty of the, the red stickers.
You know, and a hundred stamps that. How much? Like when we do the mail-out.
But also the double white registration. For two hundred sticker that think they're running, it was like seventy-five to a hundred dollars on those. So they may have gone up significantly in the last three years. Are variable, because it depends on how many times you guys have to. Get sent, sent out from what you're, because you gotta, basically you got three points, you got early, mid. So in the beginning, we're sending out probably about a hundred and twenty-five, am I? And then afterwards, again, it might only be. For that portion is variable, but the, the, where the pick cost is gonna be for the stickers or the. For the registration or the, the white one is.
Well, Molly, you were discussing the, uh, the fee schedule, basically. And certainly option one, we could adjust to ninety.
Well, I think just hearing the dollar almost right there.
I think that's.
So I, you know, based on that, then I'd go with alternate one with, for ninety dollars.
I would, I would agree with that. I think that, that's a. Solution, you got any thoughts on it there?
Well, I mean, you just started about, about cost structure, um, I think I would rather see. It broken down into, you know, here's what it costs us. Then take your time or one of the other deputies' times, say you're out there for half an hour, because. I mean, just to arbitrarily raise it from basically twenty dollars a year, now, I mean, you're talking upwards of. Ninety or forty-five, I don't know where you've ended up going with this. I guess I would have, I would have, um, just applying that to somebody. And then taking a look at it from infrastructure standpoint. You know, when you're talking about vehicles weighing thousands of pounds versus golf carts. I'd much rather have a golf cart running on our roads than I would, you know, cars. Everything that I've heard, you know, from members that have shown up here in the past, was it, it's all about. The speed and the underage driving, so I, I have. I guess I have my reservations about changing the proportion of it because of something that. You need probably in the second portion of it. Really, that's, I mean. Me, I would rather find out the cost, our true cost to it, so I can justify it to somebody to pay. You know, cause if I'm gonna have to go from twenty dollars a year to forty-five dollars a year, I'm just telling why. And if I can justify it in the fact that, you know, material costs have gone up, your guys' costs have gone up.
It's been fourteen years too, since it's been updated.
Yeah, but I mean, right now, that's. Yeah, right now, we can't see where we are, yeah, we can't even tell where that must is. So I guess, in my point of view, is I would rather see the numbers and then justify it that way.
That's fine.
I would agree with that, that's fine. I'd agree to getting those numbers around, I think that's a.
They're gonna be wrong.
They're gonna have to be, because just like we talked about, you've got a variable with the number of letters that go out. From first, second and third, and that's gonna change every year, because it depends on the residents' response.
And, you know, when we talked about, you know, trying to save costs, when we're doing this or having you or somebody else run around. You know, maybe we set up a Saturday morning from nine to ten o'clock, here's. Golf cart registration here at town hall where you can.
That would be nice, because sometimes there. And they're literally only.
Last time that we did it, you know, you and I chased each other around for a couple of weeks, trying to get these. You know, I, I understand that, so let's put the, um, the residents there, you're asserted a date, again, try and save costs and. Make our lives easier.
Yeah, that's good.
Anything else? And largely, it's before what the conversation was, I believe, registration fees are really focused on the administration side. So let's understand the administration side, uh, let's assume some growth rate. Uh, which may require some more organization around. Uh, the administration side and, uh. And come up with a cost, we're not in it to make money, we're in it to cover our costs, so. Let's just be, let's just take a. Close a look at that, and as far as the cadence, I think the cadence that has been established now for. Many years is a good cadence, and we should maintain that to, uh, the, uh, registration for two years.
So for the fee portion. I think we can all agree that we wanna look at what the real numbers are. And incorporate that into the increase, but it sounds like everybody is in agreement to maintain a two-year registration. So the question for the first change is going to be that dollar amount. Second change was temporary registration, this is one, George, I was hoping you may be able to offer some insight into, I'm sorry.
That's okay, um.
Why, when I looked at this, I saw five consecutive days for the fee of ten dollars. And when we had our discussion, we kinda talked about. Usually when we have some rentals or we have people coming up to visit, a lot of the time it's gonna be for a week. So where you're purchasing a temporary registration for five days. It kinda seemed to me that it may be better if we are making changes to this to add a couple of days, so it's a weeks. But weeks registration versus five days, and that, and that would make sense.
Uh, when we first did this, uh, golf carts were just coming online and, and I, we did not have a handle on what was gonna happen. I don't think in our wireless screens, you'd think that we'd have two hundred and fifty, fifty, uh, running around today, and I think at the end of next year, there's probably gonna be a hundred more.
So I'd like to table the, the dollar amount here. Because I think it's, if we're looking at the, the dollar amount for the first portion, we should be looking at the second one the same way and look at those costs. But, um, one thing that I do feel, because you are changing it from a five day to a seven day. That we're gonna have to do a little cross multiplication.
Yeah, I, I think the, uh, probably the verdict is gonna be weekly, one week, two weeks, three weeks, a month.
And I will say in four years, and I just converted, I think there's only been maybe two people who have done that.
But there's more that should have done it. I know, I know, now in the way for being produced some rental. It should have been much more than two at that one house alone. So what has been done and what should have been done? There's significant variability in that.
So then that brings us to the.
Right? Um, my, my input on temporary is eliminated. I think that. That it, it, uh, you know, one of the, one of the. Conversation I've had over and over is about transitory type things, uh. And the, the, the negative aspects of having more rentals, more temporary, uh. I guess of, of, uh, housing arrangements, and this to me falls into the category of making it more attractive. So my input is to consider eliminating temporary.
So if somebody has a rental and they have a golf cart dropped off, then what would be done?
Um, enforcement would identify it as.
Not allowed.
Not allowed.
Okay.
I'm making, so if it's on the road, you, you, the enforcement would be, they take it out on the road.
Yeah, typically, typically, it's the first time we start, if we catch them without registration, is, um, stop them. Make them aware that they have to register, if someone don't realize that they have to register the golf cart, especially if they're coming in for a week or whatever, or new. Um, and then generally, I'd give, give them the form right there, and then. Not all of them, but the majority, I mean, within about probably a couple of days, we're out there registering the golf cart. Um, but if you, if we are having more rentals. Um, and you're having somebody there only for a week or two weeks, you know, are they going to wanna pay the, you know. Uh, forty dollars or eighty dollars or ninety dollars, you haven't registered, even though they're only gonna be there for two weeks, are they gonna say, eh, they stopped me this time? I'll just take the chance and see how long I can go without getting caught a second time before then they issue me a citation. I mean, I don't know, I mean. It's hard to say, it's maybe, maybe, you know, so I like me, I can see taking it away, but I can also see possibly having an option. Um, for people who definitely wanna obey the town ordinance on it, that they did that renewal, but again. They gotta be made aware that if they're getting a golf cart dropped off, they might not even be aware that they have to get it registered, especially if they're on here for a week. You know, so I don't, I don't know how other than stopping them and making them aware of that law. That they need to know about it, and unless the owner of the property makes it clear in their rental agreement that if you got a golf cart, it's gotta be registered. Home owners do that, and make sure that's under contract either, so.
Well, uh, uh, having been a landlord a long time, or playing. Uh, covenants of communities are things that I put in the rental agreement to cover with the perspective. And. If we eliminate it, and I'm not, I'm not sad, and I just wanted to bring up conversation along the lines of eliminating it. Uh, it would fall on the shoulders of the person renting their property to ensure that they were. That was communicated.
Yeah, I like your idea, I'm just thinking, would, could a, uh, a temporary individual, a, uh, renter come in? In, buy a full two-year sticker? There's no reason they couldn't.
That they are, maybe they come up every year for a certain week. And they just get the two-year thing, even though they're going on a year, one year and twenty, or one weekend twenty twenty-two, and one weekend twenty twenty-three, they just get the whole year.
For that, for that temporary one now, we do the same amount of work. If it's temporary or if it's full-time, so, uh, number one, there should be, if we were to keep it, there should be no discount for counter, right? It should be whatever fee would come up there.
No, I like the idea, I just think. I just think the enforcement, but I mean, we pretty much know where the rental properties are too.
I said, I'm thinking that you can't target the rental properties.
Not target, but. I was not discussing targeting.
I'm just saying, I don't think we can look at it and say, Chris, here's the list. Go look at, go look at those.
Keep an eye on those specifically, yeah, that would.
I don't think that that's, that's what I'm saying, I don't think we can, we can do it that way.
We can't rely on, on the landlord, each and every one's different. Some would be totally compliant, I mean, you might see that now, and, and others could give it to.
I'm hesitant to remove it. I'm hesitant to remove it for the reason that. We've got a beautiful community. There are. Very few areas that you can. Within our county that you can drive all the way around the lake. One of the things about our lake is we also have rental properties that allow people to get a picture of that and to be able to enjoy that. And if we're gonna look at it as. We don't want them to bring their golf carts, I'm a little hesitant on that. Because that takes away from when some of the other people can do. And by us. Leaving only the larger option for the two-year registration. We eliminate some of the fun that our lake provides. So I'm hesitant to remove it for that reason.
Well, couldn't we just, you know, I think we probably all agreed on the seven days versus five days, and just kinda have that in there until. We vote on the actual change and the ordinance, and then have that as part of. The motion, so we can continue moving forward with that.
But, but I, I do have an issue on, on the pricing, with the, the fee base, because you said, we do as much work. On a, on this temporary one. Seven day, or just eliminate temporary, and if you come to Clear Lake and you, and you have a golf cart, if it's here for a day or two years. It's gonna be the same fee. Same amount of work done. Just a ton.
I'm like, we have the cost basis, that'll.
The final portion that we discussed changing would be the violation section. And. Keep jumping on those two, just. This gets to the point that Molly was talking about earlier, and I myself have heard it from several residents as well. That the violations that were in the violation section that was within the ordinance. Seem to not apply to the current date. When I say that, I mean the amount of the fines. So as we talked about making the changes, we discussed. The following verbiage, a violation of the provisions of this ordinance shall be considered a class C infraction. And so shall result in fines and penalties as follows. First offense, one hundred dollar fine, second offense, two hundred dollar fine. Each additional open offense, three hundred dollar fine. Additionally, if there are three or more violations of this ordinance. Occur with, of this ordinance occur within one calendar year, the registration of the golf cart. Whether annually or daily, the daily sections in there or the temporary portion. Shall be suspended, and the owner or operator of the golf cart shall not be eligible. For another registration or one calendar year from the date of the suspension. So you can see the fine, the fee structure was increased substantially. And the portion where. Uh, shall be suspended by the owner or the operator of the golf cart, that, that is maintained. So the only change on the violations is to the actual cost per each occurrence.
Does this show up on an individual's interest?
If they get a citation, the only way it'll show up. To affect their driver's license or their insurance is if they don't come in and pay the fine through the town clerk. Then the ticket would get forwarded to, in this case, the Esteban magistrate court in Angola. And if they fail to pay that citation or fail to show for the court date. Then the court could suspend their driver's license. Then the court could suspend their driver's license, then it would affect their insurance, their driving status, if they failed, if they failed to do all that.
And that's if the driver is there at the time of the accident, correct, Chris? Cause if the driver leaves the scene. You'll only have the owner of the golf cart.
Right, we are, well, so that depends on the circumstances. If it's the driver of the golf cart leaves the scene of a crash. And we are able to determine who the driver is, that is actually. Depending on severity of the crash, could be a misdemeanor or felony. Which would go through the state county prosecutor's office, it would not be necessarily just a citation. For the golf cart would be the same thing, if you struck and started a kid, let's say, and caused injury to that child and he left the scene. Then that's legal to scene, which is actually could be misdemeanor felony. A criminal offense versus just a traffic citation. It depends on the situation.
Right, no, I, I mean.
Depending on what. What, what the offense is, it should say, and if they just. Better than fear and work. After they've given the opportunity to, by the time they're told to pay it. They would have. Several opportunities to take care of the citation before it comes into effect, that their licensing pieces can affect their appearance.
I like the escalation. Uh, that, that, that this has in it. And. I think it's a good balance of. What we're looking to do, I don't. I don't. Put it in place and find out, that's the kind of work I'm asking.
And some of this with feedback from. You know, some of the deputies that have been involved in some of the situations that happened last summer, so this is based on some of the feedback from those that were involved directly.
In addition to the community, again, so said the community was also wanting to see more. Enforcement options.
Is the main thing, the, the age of the driver?
That's been the most, the majority of the point, age of the driver. So on that aspect, if it is the driver, if they're underage. The owner or the parent of that individual could be cited for allowing the violation to occur.
That's been mostly what I've heard, Darren, is the age of the owners.
So it wouldn't affect, it wouldn't affect a juvenile, let's say, because if they're underage, if they don't have a driver's. It could affect the parent. Of that child, guardian or custodian or the owner of the golf cart, allowing them to operate it. In violation of the ordinance.
Is the only other one I heard the most, I think, was. Golf carts not stopping in between round lake, yeah, well, we heard a lot of them from. I think it was the, the round lake.
Penner Drive.
And Penner Drive, that, that every, yeah, three-way stop. We heard, we heard quite a bit of complaints on people not actually stopping.
And they're sung that being over by never, I mean, over by those corners, they're making money.
Well, you know, that's kind of my question, because, you know, I have. I have a new golf cart and they don't use it twice. So they act like they do, but if you truly measure the speed of them, they don't reach twenty.
Depends on the golf cart.
Yeah.
These stock golf carts, what I, typical golf carts, yes.
But if somebody's tweaked them, yeah, I, I believe that.
We.
Golf carts out there really move.
Well, yeah, you, you, yeah, you can buy some. Can't afford them, but.
Well, I like this, I know, listening to residents and. Our marshals and deputies, I think this is a good add.
Well. I think then the next best steps would be, I'll work with Chris and Jessica. And at the next council meeting, or January, depending on what our agenda looks like at the end of. At the end of this month. That we can bring it back forward and discuss the, what those fees costs are to determine a better price for the registration. And then determine if we want to keep the temporary privilege in there or not. And move forward with the changes of violation, so.
And it would be a public hearing just like this, so it may be published in the paper. Actually, it's different with utilities and sanitation, it actually needs to be published in the paper twice. And they, and one of them being at least ten days before.
If we decide to move forward with the parking ordinance that has been discussed several times.
That one would also be twice.
I think it's in the town's best interest to push both of those through review and the process at the same time, so we can get them both. Knocked off the to-do list.
Now that it can be published.
No, not before next year, not before next year, but, well, I mean, yeah, next. Before this, this is, then yes, yes. Because it's gonna have, we're gonna have to send it through legal, and we got, got a few things we're gonna have to do prior to.
Now, do you have the days for your weighted inspections on these golf carts?
It's there on all the registrations that we keep in the office, the date that the inspection was completed. And then actually the date that they get renewed. Runner, keep a running tally on the sheet.
How long does it actually take to get enough that initial inspection, like when you guys go out, maybe you looked at the golf cart itself, Chris, I want to take you guys.
Depending if we have to explain anything to them, I mean, it can go anywhere from. Maybe ten minutes to fifteen to twenty. This depends. If they have all the paperwork ready to do and stuff, I can buy evidence in ten minutes, if they've got to fill the paperwork out, and while I'm doing the inspection and everything, then it may take fifteen to twenty minutes.
Is that on an Excel?
Yes, I have it on an Excel, well, the, the list of golf carts that we have registered are on an Excel, Excel spreadsheet.
Another day.
With the, yeah, well, yeah, the expiration dates on, so it's the. The tag member, the owner, phone number, address, year, make, model of the golf cart, and then the, when it expires, and then on the actual paper sheet, they have a file in the office. It actually includes the, the running total of every. Every time I came in for a registration renewal, it shows when we renewed it on that sheet.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that would go back to, like I said, if we opened up the town hall parking lot here for inspection, if you figured out where.
Mm-hmm. They got enough medical order.
Well, and I think the other thing about that too, with the policies we have in place, that having an office hours to get your golf cart registration. You could have that up here on the screen as well as the handouts and review some of those key sections, especially if we add. Some of the things we're talking about.
I really.
Just to reinforce.
I like the suggestion of. Upset days. Where, hey, we're gonna do inspections. Nine, nine AM to twelve PM. I think that's a, a benefit to everybody, a benefit to the community, they know they can do, benefit our resources, because they can be planned accordingly.
And this is for new registrations. That we're talking.
They could also do a renewal.
You could do the.
Grand golf cart, we can renew it right there.
Why don't they, we did inspections.
We don't, so they can just come up here and redo it.
That's why I asked.
Really, it may be easier actually for somebody to renew. Online, because they can go on the website, pay for it.
And waste it.
And then they mail the stickers to the mailman. It's actually easier for them to do it that way, on a renewal, an actual registry, an initial inspection.
I wonder if you could piggyback it off of the dates that you guys select to send out the reminders. So we do three dates throughout the summer, you do it a week after that first reminder goes out, you can include it in the reminder that, hey, there's gonna be an open session on. XX day, so that goes out in the first reminder, we've already got it pre-planned, so if a reminder goes out, we've got that second date, third one goes out, we've got that third date.
Yeah, I would just ask for some flexibility on the dates, don't always pick like Saturday at eleven because of somebody's sales or having forbidden something, you know, that's. You know, do an evening or not afternoon, have an alternative.
I could probably do, if, let's just say like a Saturday, we do it from nine to nine to noon. And then do an, also do one maybe on either that same Saturday, do another session at late afternoon, nine thirty.
The only thing I worry about that is for the state board of accounts, when you collect money, you do need to make that deposit. And I don't know, the banks close at noon, and a majority of the time, they're paying for their golf carts in cash.
That's anything over what, five hundred dollars?
For the Friday afternoon.
Depends on what the registration be and how many people share what.
And like, we, you know, Chris can say, you know, pay online, and then they could be just paying online simultaneously while he's. Um, we can't deny any form of legal tender, we can't not take their cash. But he could certainly encourage the use of the online system.
Cause they could do it on their phone, right? They could be here doing it on their phone.
Yeah.
Good discussion, nice job, Brandon. And Chris.
Agreed.
All right, so moving on. We have I M G outstanding checklists. Okay, I'll take us through this one. Uh, per Indiana code title five, state and local administration, article eleven, accounting for public funds, chapter ten point five, disposition of warrants, checks. Five dash eleven dash ten dot five dot dash two. Outstanding unpaid warrants or check void states that, uh, checks that remain unpaid. Uh, for a two-year or more, uh, two or more years as of the last day of December of each year. Are void. For I C title five, state and local administration, article eleven, accounting for public funds, chapter ten point five, disposition of warrants, checks. Five eleven dash ten dot five dash three. List of outstanding warrants or checks required to treasure. To prepare a list of all warrants or checks that have been outstanding for a period of two or more years. As of December thirty-first of the preceding year. And provided to the fiscal body, the city or town. Jessica has prepared a list of outstanding checks, which meets the stated criteria for council review. And has provided that for us, so I would ask if there are any questions regarding. That list of checks.
Yes, I have a question, have you reached out to? The individual that's, uh, to Jackie?
Yes, I have multiple occasions, I even spoke with her in the town hall before she moved and.
She didn't move, she's still here.
I thought she moved to Texas.
I see her every morning, I walk down, read her.
I know what she resigned from the D P A, she came in and talked to me and Bonnie, and she said she was moving to Texas. Um, and I asked her at that point.
She hasn't.
Okay, but I did ask her at that point, um, if she would either cash her checks or bring in the stale one. Um, she didn't, I sent her the affidavit form, which I know you've seen a copy of it recently, right? Um, that she would have to fill out to have new checks, checks reissued, and I still have not heard anything from her. I even sent her all the check numbers and the dollar amounts. She also would have received ten ninety-nines at the end of the year for the dollar, since the dollar amounts are over six hundred.
Has anybody else, can anybody else reach out to her?
Sure.
Yes, I, I, I just feel like she provided service. And we really, I, I, I don't know.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's my only thing is, you know, she did provide the town.
She paid taxes on it?
Fair amount of service, it's, it's somebody else, I don't know, I mean. That's a lot of money, I mean, that's.
And she's been paying taxes on it.
Yeah, it's over twenty-three hundred dollars, so I feel uncomfortable. Just.
Sure, if you want, I will forward the latest email I sent to her to you, and then you can look up to her about it.
Okay.
Because it has the more tax that you.
No, that's fine, yeah, just because I would know what to, you know, ask her to do, I just, I just feel bad when I see. Somebody that provided that much service and got paid for it and paid taxes on it, and she is still here.
Yeah, I even re, I mean, I've reached out for Roger Gaimier as well, and I sent him the form.
I talked to Troy on Saturday night, and he has no idea that that check exists.
I know the ones from Menards, like Menards and A T and T, I believe, um, these were probably a payment that, that the company never received. And they were reissued without these ones being canceled out, because I, I have one on there as well from her state bank, twenty twenty-one. Um, that was a reissue that I never, because the credit card company haven't received my check.
The final status reissue.
Yes, it was already reissued, I believe the Menards ones from sixteen were also, along with the Visa. At that very time.
So I would be fine moving forward with the removal of the ones from, for Jackie.
Well, I moved and we tabled this, allowing you time to follow up with, uh, Catlin, Howard. Uh, we do have to move, uh, however, I would not be, I would table it until the next council meeting.
That's.
Um, which is the twentieth of this month, knowing that the state requires us to have a list at the end of December. Do I hear a second?
I, I.
Absolutely.
Have a motion in a second, any further discussion? All of them, please, you know, five percent, right? What was, same time?
I don't know, but I just.
It's consistent, I mean, she drives.
Well, I know. I don't know, I see her, and I just know she. Sat up here and did a lot.
All right, so. That's the end of the new business, the general discussion. Open it up to the audience. Yes.
Yeah, you can go, uh, seventy-two, West Clear Lake Drive. Um, just a question of. What's happening in town clearly in regard to. Repairing roads and drainage. As you were, I'm in the middle of a project redoing my cottage and addressing drainage issues. Uh, it's gonna come off the driveway of my garage and backlot, it's gonna come off the roof line. My current cottage, we're looking at putting in. Uh, new drain lines, uh, because ones that were currently there for the cottage have been taken out. Uh, a new drain line on the front side, on the lakeside of the property. It's gonna run back, um, on the back, there's a drain. Comes across and goes under the road to, uh, really got the term, but it's my line and my neighbor's line. I've serviced that in the past to keep water from flooding. On the street. So I'm just curious as to, can you tell me a little bit more of the project, there's some things, probably on the website, then all of a sudden the website got updated, disappeared. Um, the things that I saw so far was a list of. The ratings of the streets that shows three projects that may be happening in twenty twenty-three. Um, on Quiet Harbor. Uh, West Clear Lake Drive from seven hundred down the bridge. Then West Clear Lake Drive or, uh, the bridge up to Lakeview Drive.
As far as the, those are, well, there is a couple of drainage. Things in that particular projects or those products, uh, there's. White Harbor's got some drainage, so, uh, West Clear Lake Drive has some drainage, so. I know that, Dan, I think. Probably can speak to this better than I can on language, and I think drainage is now a requirement. Of the whole package that you have to submit. So, I mean, as far as the, the drains that are out there, you know, this is, this is my view, being in the infrastructure. There's a lot of things that we don't know yet about who owns what, because. Back in the day. It was just one of those things where, you know. You get a handwritten piece of paper right now for the one from. Uh.
Over on.
The north bay.
Yeah, so. You know, for those type of things, we're gonna have to do more and more research, uh, but as far as adding drains and stuff, I think, Dan, you can speak to that better than I can. Language is better.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, I'll say this, that every situation you need, but if you wanted a general philosophical.
Yeah, I'll I'll just, I'll say this, that every situation you need, but if you wanted a general philosophical rule of thumb, residents are required to manage their own stormwater uh runoff within the, within the boundaries of their lots. The road projects, if there is drainage, it's focused on managing the stormwater from the road. Um not providing uh a utility in a sense to the residents to uh effectively drain into uh that system. Now, all that said, I think that that and why you have to look at each situation uniquely is that um partnering with the residents and assessing there might be a reason that this town is interested in uh partnering on a drainage. Uh I think in your particular case, right now, we're seeing puddling around the that general vicinity in the road, from the road itself, that not being able to get the water off the road. Um there might be many reasons, but again, that all needs to be taken offline and looked at on a case by case basis.
And also just um one other thing, the presentation is on the website. If you go to Clear Lake Information, and if you go down to Departments, and you click on Street and Sewer, it's at the, it's posted at the very bottom of that. Um DLC Clear Lake Roadway Presentation, so you can download that. It is. Yeah, it's, I know the website's gone through some changes, so it is available under Street and Sewer on the Department site.
My other can, my main concern is in the project that I've seen, and it's very limited, what I was able to look at. Um it's showing that these areas are being repaved. And my main concern is the stretch that comes down from seven hundred down to the bridge. There's drainage being addressed the west side of that section. But then there's nothing that's been addressed going from down the whole stretch. My concern is that project of that nature needs to be looked at, needs to be communicated to the property owners like myself. I had to find this out myself. Nobody from the city volunteered that anything was going on. And I want to do the right thing. I don't want puddling in the street. I don't want my stormwater going out of the street. I'm trying to address that. But the city also has to address the whole issue of the road. We're gonna repave this road. What good is it if we repave it and we haven't addressed all the appropriate drainage, whether it be public or private drainage? The water needs to be taken off the road. So the coordination, I think, is key, and that needs to be looked at.
Well, this, I can add, and you two are more of the experts. I think we're all learning a lot about the process and the community on pressing grants have been submitted. We don't even know if we're gonna get any of the funding for that or not. That's up to NDOT to let us know on that. And what was presented is a general overview of the projects. The specifics on those projects would come after we would receive the grant money. That would be then conversation to have with us as council. Is that correct, Darren and Dan?
Yeah, the 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 process is, um we we hire an engineering firm to do those conceptual drawings that were posted on the webpage. That also provided a basis for the application to the state. Uh the final designs uh will come from surveys that will be done when we hear back from the state, and indeed, we get the uh the funding. Uh at that point, the final drainage design for the roads, again, will be developed and engineered. And um and then put on drawings for bid for contractors. Recognize too that uh within the latitude of drainage roadway, stormwater drainage, you have, you could have a network of underground um sewer lines, like uh in some parts you saw on the con- concept drawing. Uh but it could also just be a simple swell along the uh the outside perimeter of the road. If, again, in those locations, there's road right of way for us to do that. So again, back to each each section of road, it can, you can go, you have road right of way in this three hundred feet and in this three hundred feet. So you really gotta get right down to the particulars. Um there is, uh I think it's fair to say that we would actively like to, you know, work with the residents, uh but the the timing, the timing of the process, we're not there yet. We need to hear back from the state.
Okay, thank you.
And just stay tuned. I mean, continue coming to the meetings and watching the website.
General help two oh six. On the Wachler recycle, is glass included finally again, or they said no? I think that's, you know, discouraging because glass is the biggest part of recycling, at least at my house anyway.
Yeah, so um you know, I actually visited his facility. We talked about that particular concern. And um if if we were interested in picking up glass as a recyclable, um it would, it would be a special and deliberate effort on his part. The current equipment that he picks up recyclables is a compacting truck. When you compact glass, it breaks up into very small pieces. And it effectively destroys all the recyclables that are in that truck. Um that it mixed in with the class. There is no process that um is available in the recycling industry to separate class from cardboard. Uh for example, inside.
It's beyond just glass on our street then. Yes, I I get your point then.
Right.
Oh, are gators considered um in these these higher power things called golf carts?
They are, they are by this, by state, they're under a different state statute and and how they are reg, they're actually supposed to be registered with the state of Indiana to the DMV.
If they're on the road.
If they're on the road, not through the town or city. So the gators, the side by sides and things of that nature are um under state statute.
So it would be state statute without roads then too?
Yes. They can go to DMV to get it, essentially a very small decal that they can get from the DMV that put on them. It's very hard to see most of them, if they have them or not.
Formal walker in the corners around our our town are problematic. You can hear some of these things come from a lot of lanes, but always get off the road. For walkers, it's not friendly when those big things come at you. It's sort of like a car. My feeling on the uh the council is debating the cost for the golf carts. And I encourage the council, we're always playing catch up when we have pricings. And I agree, get about the price, really, cost, what is it, what are our costs? But I certainly encourage you to go over that, you know, ten, twenty percent. So now, now I was playing catch up. There's nothing wrong with having a little profit margin on this thing to run this town, because many times we're just handing them out at times, and we say we don't have enough money, and here is a resource potential or income. I like what you've done tonight. I think it's very open, and I think it's very complete. And I can applaud you for making the efforts to do all this, letting us know what's going on, and I like the new website. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Captain eleven, eleven twenty. Um this is probably a question for Officer Chris. He, it's fairly straightforward to monetize the issuance renewal of the the golf cart registration. And is it possible or is there gonna monetize the enforcement side?
Firstly, the the time.
The time that it takes, how many um golf cart warnings? If it's due, you know, you issue in a, say, a big year or during a summer season or something like that.
So obviously, the the number we, either warnings or citation we issue can vary from week to eight months, so I have, so I do, do keep track of those. Um and I include this in the town uh report every month as far as how many traffic violations that we do, right? The, as far as the the money from it, um it just depends on the, the traffic stop itself, how long it takes.
Right, and I think, right. Is there, is it possible to estimate an average time that it takes to, you know, to patrol to on the enforcement side? I mean, it may not, it may not be something.
Right, your time is valuable, and if you're doing a lap and
Right.
Twenty five percent of your time is.
Yeah, so we're always actively patrolling all the time and looking for potential violations to stop people for. Um so it's not like we spend, okay, once, unless we're actually sitting and running stationary radar traffic like that, that will spend a certain amount of time, so I can't really, that can break that down for you. And they can have a traffic stop for the last five to seven minutes. Um and but also depends on what the violations are. If there's one simple violation, five to seventeen minutes. If there's multiple violations, um some traffic stops could last an hour.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of variables. I get that. But if you have, like, say, the the months of July and August.
I can tell you our busy times are pretty much from Memorial Day through Labor Day. And we can, we have the the data to back that up through the radar lines of how much traffic is on the streets. So, yeah.
I just didn't know whether, I mean, I know in a lot of when you're trying to monetize things, I mean, that that there's can, you can kind of break those things out. And I just didn't know whether that was possible or.
To an extent, I mean, we can get some information and kind of get some of that information, but again, it can vary from traffic stop, traffic stop, pretty much, day of the week, whether it's raining or nice out or summertime versus winter time. But I think the radar metrics are all on the um website too, so you can actually go in there and take a look at them. There's, Dan has done a great job. He's come up with some of the graphs, and you can actually see the traffic patterns as far as the number of vehicles that are on the streets from month to month, and obviously, the summertime is extremely gessier than the wintertime.
Do you know where she put the metrics at?
Yeah, where it's at under. I just, it's metrics, it's stayed right on there.
I did not, can you explain?
Yeah, I, I, let me, I'll hold it back. Because, no, I, I just wanted to talk specifically to where it is.
Okay.
If you go right to the homepage, it says form slash department metrics. Okay, so you can go in there. And then the metrics and then all the metrics aren't uploaded yet, and she's working.
Thank you, but that's where they'll be.
Anyone else?